... United States of America, to the government for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and evergreen.
Mayor Swanson, Counselor Tafe, Counselor Bockel.
Here.
Counselor Christensen.
Here.
Counselor Grackey.
Yep.
Okay. So, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda with the exception of the Pope County Tribune Bill and...
And I have two additions. Jean Rossum is going to be before the council and we, I added a grant discussion under the airport.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of the Pope County Tribune payment and additions of the Jean Rossum and Mendot state grant offer.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, I have a motion by Counselor Christensen to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the Pope County Tribune Bill and seconded by Counselor Tafe. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. So now we're just, I'd like a motion on paying the Pope County Tribune Bill.
I'll make the motion to pay the Pope County Tribune Bill.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Tafe to approve the Pope County Tribune Bill and seconded by Counselor Christensen. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, oh...
I think Chris Grackey's gonna...
Is this when I say abstain? I'm just wondering, someone's gonna tell me. All abstained, perfect. Thank you, Joel.
You bet.
I knew someone would tell me.
Okay. So, do we have to call it single vote or each person or...
No. No, I just make a note that...
Okay. So, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Next item or the first item on the agenda is Tom Bukens with the Starbuck Chamber of Commerce. Evening.
First of all, I'm here for the chamber tonight and not the airport to start with. It's a little bit unusual, but want to thank the council and the city for letting, you know, every year we have our annual banquet here in the, in the community center and I don't know if we ever send a thank you or say thank you, but I just wanted to say thanks for letting us use that. We had a nice turnout, we had ninety-four, served ninety-four that evening and had a nice agenda and presented all our award winners and everything, so the evening went well and I just want to say thank you for letting us use the room. Works good for us. As you noted on the agenda, we, we have Heritage Days coming up, believe it or not, in a couple or three months and as we're planning ahead, we're always looking for different events. And this year we've come up with something we think that would appease the kids, like from the age maybe ten to fifteen especially because those kids don't have a lot to do. We have little kids' games and things like that, we have, you know, stuff for the adults. But we don't have a lot for that mid-range younger kid, so we're coming up with this ninja, or warrior type course that those kids could participate in. We need space to put it and it takes about a hundred by a hundred, a hundred square feet area to host that. There's a semi-truck and the semi-flatbed has a lot of the events right on it, but there's also bouncy houses and things alongside it too, so it takes some, takes some room. And it's kind of, I don't know if you see the Ninja Warrior stuff on TV, it's something similar to that. But it's something that kids can do and wear off some energy for an hour or so and we're just kind of looking to see if it's all right if we use the city park for that, if we can find a spot down there that's big enough, probably by the tennis courts, north, north and northwest of the tennis courts and that big open area by the flagpole, I suppose. If we could use that, we just need some permission, we just wanted to check with you to make sure that was okay and then if it was all right to do like we do at the fireworks and use it as a fiscal agent to, to run the proceeds through for payment and that, the chamber will fund everything.
Do you have to have an EMS crew on standby for American Ninja Warrior event?
Say that again.
An EMS, like paramedics or ambulance crew?
They don't say that, they have, they say they have all kinds of padding and safety equipment put out for everything, so they really haven't, they really haven't addressed that so much. I mean, we could ask that question for sure, you know, could be a possibility.
Would it be just Saturday or the whole weekend, just Saturday?
Yeah, we're working on Saturday from eleven until four.
Is there anything booked in the park, Julie, or...
Um, nothing specific.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great, something new, different.
Walkable for everybody to get to?
Yeah.
Yeah, really nice.
Yeah, we like that, like I said, we like the age group that are the dresses so that they have something to do that day other than, you know, we have beach stuff later on to that, but...
Well, I shouldn't say, there are some shelters that are rented, but there's plenty of room for you.
Yeah, yeah, I would think so.
I think too.
Did we have vendors there last year, wasn't, oh, that whole section by the tennis court set up by little vendor shops and stuff or...
Not for any areas.
That was at the car show.
Right.
Oh, right, right, yeah. Yeah, if no one's reserving that area, I think that would be a great use of land with the city park.
All right. Yeah, normally there's nothing else going on other than the coronation on Saturday evening after the parade, so, as far as the chamber is concerned, so. So, that's all I had and we appreciate you helping us out.
We need to go down there.
Probably just a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we go with the chamber of commerce, or do you need that yet?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Bockel to approve the chamber's request for having the American Ninja Warrior course at the city park for Heritage Days and seconded by Counselor Grackey. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
It's gonna be fun.
Next on the agenda is Tracy Ogdo and Vicki Halverson and Lisa Shapursky and Keesa Noyes.
Um, well first I just want to say, we're not here as the auxiliary and we're not here to complain.
We've heard some rumblings and we don't want that misconstrued at all, we are seasonal campers down at Hobo.
And we have lots of friends that are three hours away, so we're here to speak on their And it all just came about because we saw in the paper that the prices were going up and it was compared to beachside. So that was just, we just wanted to address that if the, you know, the prices are going to be raised, we'd like to see some improvements because it is kind of falling apart.
I feel it's just been neglected for too long.
And I talked to some people, I told the kitchen, we got a new group being organized in town called the Riders and I talked to some of them. We've only got a couple guys here, we don't know who, and some of your younger more, they probably don't know how to fix a poster, whatever. So they've agreed to come and help. Mary Bockel absolutely will come and help if things get bad. I'll grab Grackey and somebody else if somebody's tucking in the can or whatever. Well, I get it, sometimes it happens. And I don't want it in Hobo Park in Starbuck, Minnesota.
No. Like I said, it does happen.
And you guys don't want it, so you guys jump on board and come and help me, you call in there and say, "We'll grab a rag, we'll help." Let's take care of our village, everyone. And I got this group, I know some stuff you'll have to go through the park, you know, all that kind of stuff, but this is a good group, our other men's auxiliary that have taken such good care of Starbuck. I'm sure I grab a few of them and stuff too, if there's some poles that are broken or I read your list a couple times. And these guys would be very happy because we want Hobo Park to be great too.
Yeah, and that's what we want, we just want it to look nice in our representation.
And we've, I mean, we've created like a little family down there, so I'm like, we absolutely enjoy being down there all the time and, I mean, all of us have no problem chipping in and like helping stuff, but at the same time, we're like, we're here to camp not to fix it up, so...
Those guys will have to be the boss and just say, "You can do this, you can do that," or whatever. Yeah, we want it good too, honey.
Absolutely, we just want to see some of the money going back into the park.
Absolutely.
And we, you know, we had a little trouble with summer help last year and so later in the agenda we'll be talking about hiring city help and so forth, so that'll be part of it too, you know, that we'll be looking at. And we got your list and so we know what your concerns are and...
No, that's good.
We'll do what we can to address it.
We just, you know, we didn't know if everybody was aware of like a lot of the situation.
Yeah, how bad things have been neglected, how bad things have gone downhill, I mean, we've got friends that have been there for twenty, thirty years and they've said that nothing's been updated. I mean, dock sections, I mean, you know, different things for the marine and stuff, but a lot of stuff's not been updated. And you can tell. But people keep coming back and it's like, why should, you know, we don't have, like I said, we, we don't have a problem paying more money, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna complain about it if nothing's being done.
Well, we have a couple major projects this year too with doing the roads, repairing the roads.
Well, that was like our other thing.
And redoing, redoing the bathrooms in the clubhouse and so forth.
So, that's another thing you guys talked about, redoing the bathrooms in the office. You guys realize the bathrooms on the far side are pretty badly...
I know, that was on your list, yeah, yeah.
So... So, I, I have a couple of questions, well, one, I know the budget's already done, but do we earmark so much money from the Hobo Park proceeds, the income that is made to be reinvested each year for maintenance and those types of things, or do we just wait until things need addressing?
Helen, leave it.
Sorry?
I'd say leave it till they need it. These guys need to take better care of themselves.
Well, but they're paying, they are, they are our customers. I, I don't think it's their responsibility to keep a place that they're...
Don't get so serious.
No. But you, but you've been including them on, on doing these fixes and I don't think that's right, they are our customers.
We do both.
We do both, okay. And does that vary from year to year according to the income that is set for the following or...
Well, it's not a certain percentage, it would depend on the project.
Okay. So, I, I'm just trying to get some kind of a timeline in action instead of just lips for you.
We just haven't seen any projects done, so that's where, besides the docks, but that's separate.
So...
We pay for, the docks are paid for separately.
Yeah.
It's not Hobo money, so we haven't seen any improvements, that's where we're, if there is money that's supposed to go towards that, it's not getting done.
So, what would be a timeline that we could do, I, is there, to get something solidified, but there's actual movement forward, what can we do to create, I don't know, for lack of a better word, a punch list and work with Randy and Mary Beth and, and prioritize and look at how much money we have set aside?
A lot of the things are inexpensive, like poles that are just leaning, they just need to be, you know, reset with, yeah, nope.
I got stuff that my house will bring.
And then just paint, you know, fresh coats of paint on things, you know, just some of those things are, the sand, the sandbox, the weeds grow up through it, you know, that new plastic, that doesn't cost very much, but that kind.
So perhaps a list that prioritizes things and to have a conversation again?
We did do a light list, yeah.
I just want you to not think that you got patted on the head and you left the city council meeting without any forward movement.
I know for sure, like, we are kind of wondering, because we were talking about, like specifically at my campsite and the neighbors right next to us and behind us, we need new gravel to level stuff off. Tracy's old site where I used to camp, that's in desperate need, like that, that's sinking back there.
You know, I shared this list with...
Yeah, so it's like...
So that would be something that would be nice to get done before May first of new gravel.
We, is, are we gonna get new gravel or is that something that we're gonna have to foot the bill on because I'm like, are campers gonna start sinking here?
The county road manager just lets us know this site needs some gravel, we bring a bucket of gravel, we back drag it.
Well, and we need to know that ahead of time because my husband's only gonna bring Big Bertha in once and it's not easy to back her in and out on a whim, so we, we need to know when that's coming into...
So would that be directed to Mary Beth then and then you and Randy speak as far as what needs...
They're just starting down what site it is.
Okay.
I mean, if there's, they usually let us know that this site needs gravel or what, might bring the...
And they'll do it, they just need to be aware.
Okay.
So, is Mary Beth, is that the, are you the right channel then?
Yes, I would be.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I will let Ariel know that then, because that was at Big and Skirn going into the summer.
And the bathrooms are all being done now, they're all gutted, the tile is going in, it's underway.
Both buildings?
Both bathrooms and the office.
Just that one's being worked on?
Yeah.
Because the ceiling and the, where the skylights are in the other bathroom is where it leaks really bad, so that's gonna get moldy and rotten really fast.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, I guess I wasn't even aware of that.
We mentioned it last time we were here.
I think last time...
Too, we, we asked to bring a list and, you know, because we, you guys spend time down there more than any of us do, you know, so you guys are the de facto experts on it and so us having this list in front of us gives us something to work off of and make sure that Hobo Park manager has, you know, the list in front of them to know what, what to focus on, so we'll definitely take this, this list under advisement and that's, you know, the correct next step then to get things...
But the thing is, is that a lot of this stuff has been complained about to, okay, Mary Beth or whoever's been in the office, and they've complained multiple times to people, you know, higher up than them and nothing gets done.
Yeah, and I, like I, Mayor had said, we had an issue with labor and that's why later in the agenda we're addressing hiring on more people at Hobo Park.
But this wasn't just last year, this is like multiple times. Fire hydrant does not work, that's not worked for years. You can't even read the tag anymore.
Yeah, and, and we, we can appreciate after it's been brought to our attention that more work needs to be happening down there and so, you know, like I said, I think this is the correct step forward to kind of improve the chain of communication to make sure that we're all on the same page, you know, because Hobo Park is a valuable asset to us and, you know, you assume the gears are turning and functioning normally until you hear otherwise, you know, so, you know, like, I, I apologize if you feel like you weren't being heard before from Hobo Park or city council, but, you know, like, this is, this is how we can fix this and hopefully this next year is gonna be a better improvement than the previous too, so...
And you see it too, with me and I got these guys having to do their things.
Yep, so we've, we're aware of the situation, we've got extra help hopefully coming on board to kind of address everything that needs to be done and make it a...
Well, we understand, like, that, I, trust me, I know the list is hefty, but it, like, we know it's not all gonna happen.
Well, you gotta start tackling one thing on the list, otherwise two new ones pop up, so I get it.
Well, no, it's not gonna happen overnight, but...
And if we got a crew down there and you got the list, you know, Randy will oversee, say, "You guys can do this, maybe do the other." Yeah, we want it nice too. One of you I really like. No, I want it nice for all of you. That's our part too.
Well, I want to thank you again for bringing that list on, you know, that, that helps us, so, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick suggestion? Being that you guys...
Could you come up to the podium, please?
Being that you guys don't camp down there...
What's your name?
Sorry, my name is Patty Erickson, I am also a camper, seasonal camper down at Hobo, but my suggestion would be that, being that you guys don't camp down there and you do represent our city, maybe it would be a good suggestion for one or two of you to come down through the park through the summertime and just talk to some of the campers, see what their other lists are, see what their other concerns are, represent the city and thank them for their contributions to the Hobo Park as well.
I got quite a bit of that. But you're right, and that's good, we can swoop around, I should do their quite a bit, and I know almost everybody there, so I figure if somebody wonders something, they'd know, you know.
Yeah, and a few other faces, wouldn't hurt to just come down, say hi.
Sure.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Nick Koos from Widseth. Thank you, Nick.
Hi, I'm Nick Koos with Widseth. Just have one thing on, on my list here for tonight, I guess, and that's the future water and street project and engineering study for the wastewater treatment facility plan that we discussed at the work session. The water and street project would be the northeast part of town, north of Trunk Highway twenty-nine and east of, or east of Trunk Highway twenty-nine and north of Trunk Highway twenty-eight, replacing water and sewer and streets for Broadway and Eighth and then the blocks in between, between twenty-nine and all the way over to, was it Abercrombie? No, one block, a couple blocks more than that. And then improvements to the wastewater treatment facility and we would put together the documents to place both of those projects on the funding lists for, for the Public Facility Authority and the Clean Water Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water Revolving Fund so that the projects could be funded. Typically takes, you would submit that information in June, the way it sits now, we wouldn't probably have enough time to complete the facility plan to submit by this June as we have to work with the MPCA to get new TMDL limits. I know they've been updated fairly recently, but they would relook at the plant again and then get back to us and usually that takes thirty days or more and so then we wouldn't have enough time to, to meet the June deadline for this year. But this project would be a couple years out anyway, so that would just give us additional time to get all the documents together that they need. It'll have to have an environmental review and some other things too that take a bit of time, has to go through all the agencies and they look at it as well from an environmental standpoint, so. Any questions about the, the project?
Do you have a map of the streets that are part of the scope of the project? Or do you provide one, is that in?
I do, it was, it was handed out at the...
The previous one?
At the previous meeting.
We got it at the work session.
Yeah, at the work session, yep, it's the same one. I guess I could scramble and...
No, no, I was just trying to get it on time. I do have record that we had that conversation and we went through that, you know, we spent quite a bit of time at that work session and looked at the layout, so...
Yep, so it's that same, that same area that we discussed.
I don't have any other questions, I don't know.
So we would just need a motion for, to go forward with, if you want to go forward with, um, putting, Widseth putting together the...
I'll make a motion to approve the request for engineering services.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion by Counselor Tafe to approve going ahead with the facility plan and engineer, or environmental documents for Widseth and seconded by Counselor Grackey. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, so...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Can I ask a question about the streets?
Yep, please come up to the podium.
How is it determined what streets get repaired or whatever?
Well, yeah, you can talk with Nick and he'll tell you there, he's with the engineering firm, so, but I think it's Highway twenty, or one fourteen and...
This is the northeast quarter town is what we're looking at.
Yeah, but I mean, how, how is it determined that those are the ones you're gonna do?
Usually I drive around and look at the ones that are in the worse shape and kind of look at the budget and determine which ones...
Well, that's what I'm asking.
And sewer had something to do with this, right? Yeah, water and sewer had, was a big priority on this project?
This is, yeah, this is for the project, I think he's talking about just the street itself, on which one gets tarred each year and that kind of thing. Yeah. You wouldn't want to pave over a street rate...
Yeah, no, I understand this one's related to the water and the sewer, so...
That, that goes into effect or it's kind of tied into it to, you don't want to build a new street over a street that has bad water and sewer under it because tenure's down the road or whatever, you're tearing it all up and all the money that you spent for the surfaces is for nothing.
Okay. Do you want me to stay here then?
Yeah, please do.
I'm Jean Rossum and I ran for city council last year basically for two things, blight and the condition of the streets in Starbuck. I have some pictures here. I'd like you to look at them and pass them down and tell me what you would do if that was across the street from your house and you had to look that, that out your front door. That, there's four of them, if I drive around two blocks, there's four of them that are in that two-block area that I think are probably, they're in the ten worst ones in the city of Starbuck, at least what I have seen. There's all kinds of ordinance against it, you know, you've worked some on the ordinances, but I don't feel any is, not enough is being done. There's one there where last year, I think there was three cars, two boats and a motorcycle. Now there's five cars, three boats, two snowmobiles and a trailer. And, you know, there's, there's both residential and, I guess what are termed commercial sites that are, have severe blight in the city and I guess, you know, people say they're doing something and I know that people have been given citations and stuff, but nothing has been removed in any of these, at least that I've seen. Nothing is being done and, you know, if, if these things aren't enforced, it's just gonna keep getting worse and worse. I'd like to know who is a code compliance officer for the city. Says a code compliance officer is supposed to go around and look for these types of things and do the citation. You're looking into ordinances, what is blight, it says permitting a condition which unreasonably annoys, injures or endangers the safety, health, morale, comfort and repose of any considerable number of members of the public. Now, you can get annoyed in a lot of ways that don't relate, so I do that, but that's one thing. that's one thing. The, uh, the other thing is. Looking at the committees and this blight comes to me under the, what's called city, uh, beautification and stuff. And I'd like to know why there is no public person on that city beautification enforcement committee. It's council members. Why, why is no one from the public on that? There's someone on the public on just about every other committee.
I don't know if you're talking about the same beautification committee I'm thinking of, or?
That's, I don't know exactly what it says, but it's, it, it says including blight at the end of the description. So, I don't know. One other thing, this is not really visible, but it's still a problem. The ordinance on the sidewalk says the owner of any property within the city abutting a public sidewalk or alley shall keep the sidewalk or alley in repair and safe for pedestrians. Now, I, I don't, under, I mean, I understand that ordinance, but I don't know how it would be enforceable. I mean, if the city, if the sidewalk cracks in front of the house, are you gonna to, go tell a homeowner he has to replace it? You know, I don't know. You know, that's an ordinance I don't understand. I think I said this a couple of years ago. Walk down no, Wollin Street, both sides, there are sidewalks, but you can't walk on them. You'd trip. So, um, I guess, I voiced my opinion and I've, I've really been disappointed that not much is done. Just sitting here listening to else talk about Hobo, Hobo Park too. In my opinion, it's a very simple way to do things there. You have a system where the people in the park can write a complaint or ask for repair or something and give it to the manager and process it. You know, so that they don't have to come and fight for it. If there's a repair order, you know, or so, something between the city manager or the Hobo Park manager and the city, they should be able to figure out, okay, this is gonna cost this much. Okay, but let's do it now before it costs twice as much. So, I guess I voiced my opinion and I guess, uh, we'll see what happens.
I like the idea of a work ticket order for the Hobo Park.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, Mitch Johnson, Chief of Police, uh, to give a recap for twenty twenty-four and the police report.
Okay, uh, for the highlights, I guess, for last, uh, month, for January, we had a hundred eighty-nine calls for service. Uh, compared to December, we had a hundred and forty-nine, so a little uptick in January there, so. Um, if there's anything you guys have any questions on regarding any of the calls for service that are in your packet there that I can touch on, or if, otherwise we'll move on to the next. Um, what you guys, I think you guys all have the, uh, the annual report they put in your packets there. Um, so I'll just kind of briefly go through it. I won't go everything verbatim, but I'll touch on some things. These will be, uh, they're on our city website, under the police department statistics, so if anybody ever wants to look at it, they can. Um, so since two thousand twenty, we've had an average of about eighteen crashes per year, uh, which we had, again, eighteen in two thousand twenty-four. On two thousand twenty-four, we had issued a hundred and eighty-four warnings on various traffic offenses. Uh, twenty-two Minnesota State citations, issued, uh, three City of Starbuck admin citations issued. And the Starbuck PD officers had a total of two hundred and fourteen traffic stops and gave out about eighty-six percent of those were, um, just warnings. Um, we had five DWI arrests in two thousand twenty-four, which we've been averaging since two thousand twenty, about seven per year. Uh, last year was our, last year of doing towards zero death, uh, for the time being. Uh, we did participate in it again last year. Um, problem is that we're short with officers and then for them to get overtime and for some of them to keep up on the training and to take on some of the shifts. Um, there's only four of us and I wasn't getting any assistance. We had, we're a joint, uh, partnership with Pope County and Glenwood. And some of the officers over there also were having difficulties filling shifts, so we just kind of dropped it for now and if it sparks up another interest, we'll move on and maybe start it up again, but until then, we're gonna just discontinue until that point is done, so. Um, how that basically works is that they get overtime shifts for each wave that comes out and then I have to deviate out. It's just a lot of money and grant money that's getting wasted, it's not being used because the officers can't cover the shifts. So, they're just too busy with their own shifts. There was a typo here under the domestics. I must've just missed it somehow, but anyways, uh, we actually had an increase in reports of domestic disturbances, uh, in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I think it says decrease, down to eight, which was incorrect. Um, our calls for domestics increased from twenty-one in two thousand three to twenty-six complaints, and those are domestic assaults. Uh, we probably had around, um, I'd say around twenty-three, or forty-three total domestics. Uh, but, uh, twenty-six of those were actually domestic assaults, which are those very, uh, uh, not good and those are the most dangerous ones we go on any domestic in that, for that case, but. Um, so we continue to work closely with the Surny's Office, someplace safe, human services, to, you know, make sure that these victims are treated properly and get the right services, so. Um, oh, I forgot to move my screen up here. Sorry about that. And you can see the numbers up there for, we got nine-one-ones and everything up there.
So I know it's hard to do an analysis of it, but any insight onto what the huge spike would be?
It's, it's not really, I don't know. It's, it's the domestics, you know, everybody's, um, a lot of people are staying home. Uh, we have a lot of, there's some low-income housing that does play into the risk. Um, a lot of people are, are not, uh, employed. Um, you have the, the working comp, you make, some people are making more money at home than they are having a job. Um, so it's, we have domestics, you know, usually they generally happen at night, but we've had domestics in the last couple of months, a lot of them are during the daytime, uh, ten o'clock in the morning, one o'clock in the afternoon. Um, and physical domestics, so it's, it's just kind of all over the place.
Uh, what is, is it predominantly drug-related or alcohol-related too?
Some of them completely sober. Um, but some have, you know, either drug-related, some, majority of times drug or alcohol-related. Uh, but there are times where we've had a couple of calls this year where there hasn't been any of those on board and they're just not getting along and things escalate, so. Could be sometimes mental health, something like, something like that, but. Two thousand twenty-four, we had increased in, uh, I should say, uh, increase from drug investigations from fifteen in two thousand twenty-three to nineteen in two thousand twenty-four. Again, we were closely with the West Central Drug Task Force, uh, working on, on, on combating that. Um, out of the fifteen investigations, three of them stemmed from traffic stops and others from suspicious activity and received from the public, or they were self-initiated investigations, so. We had eighty-nine calls of some sort of suspicious activity happening in the city of Starbuck, which again, three of those ended up, uh, in some type of criminal investigation and arrest and some led on to, you know, drug, led on to drug investigations. Um, so we strongly encourage the community again to continue reporting any type of suspicious, suspicious activity and as it's proven effective deterrent, uh, for, you know, any criminal activity in the city limits. Overall, uh, the Starbuck Police Department had twenty-five, a little over twenty-five hundred, uh, incidents, two hu, two thousand five hundred and fifty to be exact. Um, out of those calls for service, forty-seven of those were cleared by arrest, which about forty-six percent of those arrests were traffic citations. Thirty percent of those arrests stemmed from drug investigations, domestic assaults, suspicious activity. Um, and then the other twenty-four percent of the arrests were from arrest warrants, thefts, harassment complaints, other, other type of criminal investigations, so. We stay really involved in the community again. Again, we have the School Resource Officer Program. Uh, we're a part of the Minnewaska Area, Area Help Council. Uh, we're a part, part of the Minnewaska Crisis Team, towards zero death we were. Neighborhood Baratch Program, uh, we have the Starbuck Police Department Bike Rodeo, Starbuck Night to Night. Um, the Safety Camp for the kids that happens every year. It's been a great turnout. Uh, Ryan's been doing an awesome job. Every year the numbers have decreased. I think they're, when he originally started, he was at twenty-five kids several years ago and he's over forty, almost to fifty now. So we hear a lot of great things that coming out of that. Uh, we've been training some of the businesses in violent critical incidents and how to respond to, uh, you know, an active shooter or something like that. Uh, so they have their own protocols. Uh, we've done the nursing home and a couple other, uh, other ones, so, um, that's being done. And in addition to that, I continue to be, I'm on the Minnesota Chiefs of Boards, Board of Directors. Uh, this is my third year on there, so I have another two years of service. So again, we're a part of the West Central Drug Task Force, the West Central SWAT team we're also a part of. Um, again, we work with the emergency management, um, part of that. And we now do have a new emergency manager for Pope County. Uh, so we, it's a good asset to have. Um, she helps us, helps me, helps the other Glenwood PD and myself, so I have someone to push back on and uh, help us out. And I don't know if you know Tina Lindquist, she's very, she used to be the Grant County, uh, emergency manager, so. But she's very, uh, the go-to person, so she, she knows what she's doing. So it's great to have her in our, in our county. And then down there, yeah, again, you can see the training that we go through. I'm not gonna go through all that and then our mission statements there, but. Uh, total charges filed this year, we had thirty-two. Uh, previous year we had, uh, twenty-six. Now, every charge that's been filed doesn't mean there's a, you know, a guilty plea on it, uh, so it depends on that, but we did file thirty-two cases. Uh, and there, it's up from twenty-six previous year. Animal complaints, uh, they went, uh, up a little bit. We went from, I think I'm looking at the right one, yeah, went from, uh, ten to twenty-five. Um, those consist of barking dogs, dogs at large. I think we had some muskrats and some other things and people's wa, window wells and skunks and stuff like that, so. But that's the majority of those calls. Assists, um, down a little, civil issues are down, motor assist are down. Our agency assist about, just about the same, just a couple down. Public assists were way up, one-eleven, um, and those either consist of welfare checks, um, just some type of, uh, assistance, putting someone's, uh, you know, putting their fire alarm off, something like that. Um, it, it's kind of wide broad category, so we had a lot of that. Uh, the medicals went down a little bit. So the ambulance has always been busy. Our child protection and vulnerable adult cases, uh, we had eighty-seven, so those have been skyrocketing. I don't know the reason for them, but this year it's been a, a lot of them. Um, in total of like, we had total of ninety-three investigations. Those were combined with vulnerable adult and child protection. Win Academy, we've been busy there. Two hundred and ninety calls for service. The last year they had three hundred and nine. They have been gradually going down, but it's luckily that we have Ryan up there, otherwise my office would be permanently.
Is the student population comparable, I mean, each time or sixty kids generally every year?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just wondering, you know.
So, back in the day, way back in the day.
Yeah.
They had over a, almost a hundred. Uh, but since then they've had generally from sixty to seventy, but they, they stay between that fifty and sixty range.
Okay.
I'd say it fluctuates because kids graduate, move on and move on, and then we get a couple of new ones, so. Uh, but these kids come from, I mean, all Ray.
All over, yeah.
Counties, so.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
So Ryan stays very, very busy and does a great job up there, so. Thefts, we had a big increase this year, uh, and break-ins, um, went to thirty-three from nineteen. Again, I don't know, there's a lot of people, again, are not working and they're either drug-related or whatever the case may be, but uh, we have a little spike in that, so trying to curb that. Uh, five criminal damages. Burglaries are good down. We've done, had none, so that was good. Nobody broke into anybody's house when someone was there, so that was good.
Mitch, is this like, um, comparable to other towns our size in the state of Minnesota?
Um, we are, depending on where you're at. Um, we're probably above the average for our size of town, for, for these type, for calls for service. Um, you look at Lake Whedon, um, and I just, I just know this, I haven't looked at any of the numbers, but, um, Whedon is the same size as us. They average probably seven hundred to six hundred calls a year and we average twenty-five hundred. So, and it's also our geog, where we're at, we're on a tourist, we're on the lake.
I'm sure summer.
We're in a central, we're in a central location, you know, you'll come from ninety-four, you got the, the college, you got anywhere, if you wanna go anywhere southeast-west, they gotta kind of go through Starbuck. Um, and so a lot of the, when that, when our population basically triples in the summer, we got a lot of influx and we deal with a lot of issues that way too, so. Uh, that does play a, a big role into why our numbers are a little higher than.
Okay.
Than the average town that's out in Whedon, on Ten Buck Two, and they don't have any.
Not a lot of drive-through.
Tourist attraction, so. Welfare checks, again, was, went way up. Um, those have been on the, same with the, like, the domestic, they kind of go side to side, welfare checks, but, uh, we have been busy doing a lot of, uh, mental health calls. And the reason for a lot of mental health calls, because there's just no place to put these people, uh, there's no facilities. We, we'll bring, uh, an, a, individual to the hospital for a mental health hold and they will be released in hours and they'll try to call ten, fifteen facilities, twenty, thirty facilities, and no one will take them. Um, so what ends up happening, happening is that they get sent back home and we get called back out and we're taking them again, so. It's just unfortunate, so that's the major reason of why you're seeing such a skyrocket in calls. ATVs, we have two hundred and thirty permits, uh, in the city of Starbuck, so that's quite a bit of golf carts that are driving around. Fortunately, we didn't have any accidents. We haven't had too many complaints. People have been, you know, the signs help that we put up and really we don't get, we get, we get some complaints and we gave a couple of citations, but we don't get a ton of them, so. Uh, people are paying attention and following the rules, so that's a good sign, so. I think that's it, so. You guys have any questions or?
So I think the Starbuck Police Department does an excellent job with community involvement, you know, with the bike rodeo, Night to Unite, the, um, kids training camp, safety camp and everything like that, and I think it's excellent that we're doing all of that. Is there any programs that you'd like to see? Not saying that you're not doing enough, but I'm saying is there anything that you want, want to see that we haven't been able to do before that would be more community involvement?
Not to come to mind, I guess. I, I think what we do, it's, it's, it takes a lot of time and effort to do a lot of it.
Absolutely.
Um, so, I mean, when that bike rodeo hits, then we're looking at, you know, Ryan plans, starts planning this for Safety Camp in January. Um, and then we do the Night to Unite, and that's another two, three months of planning. Um, so it's just, it takes, if we have a bigger agency, I'd be like to see a lot of, you know, maybe a community policing or something where you could bring the citizens in and have a citizen's academy. That'd be awesome, but you also need the, the personnel and the time and the resources to do it. And a lot of cities have that. They have community service officers. Which they drive around and they're like technically a little security and they drive around in squad or whatever and help report calls or uh, maybe respond to your, your, uh, your vehicle unlock and they'll go do the vehicle unlock or they do the, the minor calls of, um, you know, the simple public assist that they can do that is not gonna endanger their safety. But that would be ideal, uh, because a lot of these companies, you know, to retain the officers is how that, that's how they get them in. They could start them as a CSO, Community Service Officer, bring them in and then they kind of just work their way up, you know, once a position opens and then they hire.
What are the qualifications that you need to?
Most of them have to be just going to, you know, law enforcement academy.
Do they need to finish law?
They don't have to finish.
I have a lot of students that do that, that are, that are not graduated yet.
In a program.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and just going to school for it. They don't necessarily have to end up being a law enforcement officer. They just maybe law enforcement degree or criminal justice degree. Um, but those are usually the stipulations.
Is that something?
There's no, there's no age limit. I mean, eighteen on, um, but they have to be an adult to respond, but yeah.
Is that a program? We could perhaps talk with the new. We could perhaps talk with the new people up at Alec Tech in the law enforcement to see, you know, I don't know if it's internship is not the right word, but.
It's kind of a, you have to just, you kind of start it up on your own. I mean, you leave the college, and you just put it out there that you're hiring.
Yeah.
Community service officers.
Because it's great on the resume.
Yeah. It looks great. Problem is, we just don't have the resources or the squads or the people to man those hours. I mean, you'd have to, it's a lot of work in itself.
Yeah.
It's kind of their own little entity. You can almost have their own little.
A few students actually were on bikes.
Yep.
And that's what they did.
Put them on Bike Patrol, you can put them on, put them on a golf cart. We could buy a golf cart, and they could be whatever the complaint may be. Yeah, no, but they do stuff like that. I mean, it's just Bike Patrol, yeah.
Yep. Just a nice presence to have around.
So, it's definitely a good, especially in the summer.
Yep.
And then, and it would assist us, and we can deal with the more serious calls and not worry about all the little petty calls, dog complaints.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like that. Loose dogs, so.
Follow-up question, too, then, in regards to Gene Rossum's concerns, would it be appropriate for him to call the Starbuck Police Department to, if he has concerns about blight that's not being addressed?
So, we've done, so here's, here's the thing, is we've done, so the blight has gone through, and we've done our inspections, and we have processed to the point where we, no longer, it's up to you guys to follow it. So, it's kind of in your guys' lap now. And a lot of, I think the last discussion we had was that the blight was going to be, you're going to talk and how we're going to combat some of these places where they had overabundance of property. Well, that's out of my hands. It's got to be a council or council direction, because we can cite them all you want, and we've done that, and they've gotten their citations, but they're still failing to respond. So, from here on out, it's either taking a company to come in and clean them out or hiring a company to do the rubbish cleanup, but that has to be under the council direction.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just not aware, without looking at the previous time that we talked, if the concerns that you have in your packet are the same ones.
Gene, if I've talked, and he's brought them to me, and I know, and those are the properties that we have issued blights to.
Okay.
They're just failing to comply. And so, I mean, really, it's, versus law enforcement's perspective, there's not much I can do besides hand it into your hands and decide how are we going to take action on from there.
All right.
Because it's just something we got to, I mean, we do it every year. We do the blight, and we could cite them, which is fine, but if they're not going to follow through with the cleanup, there's, then there's not much else I can do, so.
Right. You know, we've talked to one company that does that type of thing, but they don't do it in the wintertime.
Yeah. No, no, and I get that, and I get that it's wintertime, but, you know, we do the spring, but it is kind of like we said, we do our part of it, and we do our inspections, and we do that, and then we cite them, which we did seventy-five this year. And out of the seventy-five, we only had, we had like fourteen that are just non, I think we've downed to like maybe eight or nine that haven't still complied, but we did seventy-five blights, but ninety percent of those, they were done in the first week. They didn't make any issues.
So, I mean, that's, that's good progress that ninety percent of them weren't done.
Yeah. I mean, they just got the letter, they didn't get a fine, and they got it done. The only ones you're having are the ones that are just refusing to answer your call or follow up with you or do anything. We've given them ample and ample of opportunities to do so, and they just refuse to.
I think, once spring comes, I think we need to reassess.
Mitch, what's the timeline? Do you have to redo those citations again this year? Or does it carry over? For those who didn't do anything?
Technically, so that's the thing, that's where we're kind of stuck, is like, because it's the same issue.
Yep.
So, but if the council's not going to act on it, then, then do you want us to just go back and issue another citation and start the whole process over again? Because it's going to be just kind of the.
So, is your citation still good? If the council ended up coming up with something that would make an acting upon it, can we still act upon the citations that you issued in 2024?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
All right.
Yep, you can. So, I would, you know, get that, try and want to get some of that done when spring happens.
Yeah.
Because usually about the middle of June is when we go back out and we start.
Okay.
Going back out and.
I didn't know if you had to reset or not, but thank you for doing all that.
Some of them don't pay, won't pay the fines, so it just gets rolled over to their taxes. And it is what it is, but. So, but it does, we need to come up with some type of plan, whether, how are we going to take care of the property he's talking about, and we're having issues with, because literally, we, our hands are tied, and there's nothing we can do, so, besides continue to give them citations, which they're not responding to, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next, next item on the agenda is Police Department. I don't know if anybody, oh, excuse me, Fire Department.
Do it again, Mitch, it was so good.
Fire Department. I guess we don't have anybody from the Fire Department.
You remember.
He doesn't have anything.
He doesn't have anything? Oh, there he is. Can't see him behind the podium. Next on the agenda is, is the Water Sewer Department.
I don't have any.
Have anything? Okay. And next is the City Clerk Treasure Performance Bond for the Verizon Tower Removal.
Yeah, I just wanted everyone to know that we talked about that last month, about getting a performance bond for the removal of equipment if it were to be abandoned, and they have done that.
Thank you.
That's it?
So, we're just waiting for it to be signed?
Yeah. We're just waiting for the original, but, yeah.
So, okay. So, the next item on the agenda is, I guess we don't have anything for Planning and Zoning, the Airport Committee, Tom Bukins, if you want to discuss the MINDOT grant, or?
I'm on the verge of.
Okay.
We just received a letter this afternoon saying that we had been selected to receive the MINDOT grant that had been applied for, for a new mower for the airport. So, basically, we just need council's approval to proceed with the grant. This is a letter that we've been selected, and then we go ahead and fill out a more detailed grant on that.
I see the old mower is, what, sixteen years old, seventeen?
Which we also got on a MINDOT grant, so that'll be traded in for the new one. And, oh, yeah, the state will pay for ninety percent of this, and the city pays for ten, so it's a great deal.
So, is that twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-two? That's the ninety percent the state is awarding in the grant?
They will pay for ninety percent of that, so basically, the city will pay for just over two thousand dollars, and the state will pay for the rest. So, the council just would need to make a motion to proceed with obtaining the grant.
We'll entertain a motion to proceed with the grant request.
I'll make the motion to proceed with getting the grant for the mower for the airport.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Tafe to go ahead with pursuing the MINDOT state grant for the new Kubota mower for the airport, seconded by Councilor Christensen. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, Streets and Parks, and I'd like to hear from Chris Grecky on that, so.
Yeah, well, Dane and I are on, I thought it was Parks and Hobo Parks, maybe Streets on there. Anyway, we met two weeks ago, Dane and I, Tiffany, Randy, and Roger Auberg joined us, and we specifically talked about an ARP grant to apply for, and that was our main focus of that meeting. And then last Friday, Randy, Tiffany, and I, and Roger also joined us, went down to the park and talked to Randy and picked his ideas, his brain, as far as what we would like to do with the grant, and that would be to apply to get parking and, and starting small, so, and Randy, pop in anytime you want, but parking would be in front of Shelter Two, is that right, Tiffany? So, in front of Shelter Two, in that area, with one designated handicap accessible parking marked, and then having one path for accessibility for someone to go from the road or that parking lot to Shelter Two.
To the bathrooms there?
Yeah, because the bathrooms are there. Tiffany said that's the one that's checked out the most. Did I miss anything, Dane, Tiffany, or Randy?
Just that the deadline on this grant is coming up, so that we'd be pressed for time to write the grant, and I think we have a meeting on schedule for end of the month to review the grant proposal and get that off and sent, so.
So, just any thoughts about that? I guess, do you want to share like what we talked about, what the parking lot would look like and what that path would look like?
Yeah, the sidewalk would be more or less a sidewalk from the tar road to the bathroom entrance on the north side of the building, kind of a straight sidewalk. The road kind of curves there. We'd more or less just kind of square it off where the horseshoe pits are and kind of square with the road for parking spots there. I think you discuss some additional parking along the lake pools also. I did call David Dodds and just double check on the concrete price that I kind of estimated on. It sounded like it was pretty close, so as far as the estimate for the grant, it's right in that ballpark.
Is it, is it a split grant, or do they?
No.
Pay a certain percentage?
No, we, we get the money and we have, but we have to spend it by the end of the year. And the money, if we get it, comes in June, so some kind of a timeline we have to make up. As long as it's spent, if we do not spend it, it's gone.
Yep.
So, I don't know how the council feels about putting in a cement sidewalk there in the parking lot. I guess now would be the time, because I've already started working on the grant, so say something, please, today.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve going forward with the ARP grant.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Councilor Tafe to go ahead with pursuing the ARP grant for the park improvements, and seconded by Councilor Baukel. Any further questions or candidates? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Well, thank you for your work and for pursuing that, so. So, we'll move on to the new business on the agenda is, first one is to approve Resolution 2025-06, accepting a donation from Beachside RV Park for the Starbuck multi-use path on the west side of the highway.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-06.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Tafe to approve Resolution 2025-06, accepting donation from Beachside RV Park for the Starbuck multi-use path, seconded by Councilor Christensen. Any discussion or questions?
I know they're not here, but I'd just like to thank the owners of the Beachside RV Park for.
What's that?
I said, I know they're not here, but I'd like to thank the owners of the Beachside RV Park for making this donation.
Derek and Amanda Bohm. So, yeah, I think they paid about, what, a third of the cost?
Roughly.
Roughly a third, yeah, so. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item is discuss hiring summer help for 2025 at Hobo Park and general maintenance. Anything you wanted to say on that, Joan, or?
Just that we'll need to hire at least one more person for Hobo Park. If not two, it'll be something to discuss. And Randy and Mike, what their needs are for part-time summer help. I think at least one.
At least one, if not two, kind of see what we end up with and talk to Mike and see what his thoughts are.
So, I don't know if.
Joan and I talked about maybe the Personnel Committee getting together and kind of reviewing what we need, and maybe salaries and so forth, so.
We just want to get started, so we can try to, you know, find somebody.
Will you put that in the paper, Junie?
We'll put it in a few different places. Yeah, whoever has good ideas on where to put it.
Sure.
You know, that'd be great. Is there an age limit for the Hobo Park people? I know for the city, they have to be eighteen. Yeah, I think eighteen, so they can drive vehicles and golf carts. Any younger, they can't do that.
Yeah, I'd like to encourage the Personnel Committee to review the part-time hourly salary, too, because, you know, part of the additional cost to the Hobo Park was to be able to secure additional help down there, and you can put out job postings, you know, all day, and if the price isn't competitive, it won't be filled, so, I don't know. I know two of the council members are on that, but if you guys wanted to review that, I think that would be beneficial for everyone.
Well, I think we'll, we'll probably meet soon, so. I don't know, maybe we can send something out to the council after a meeting or something.
Well, it'll probably come back to be approved at the next meeting, whatever.
If any rate changes occur.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, okay, next item on the agenda is to approve the Rainbow Rider contract for 2025 and forward, and from what I understand, it's the same.
It is. They used to issue a new contract each year, and now they are going to just go forward with this one, unless one or the other of us would like to cancel it.
I'll make the motion to approve the Rainbow Rider contract.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I'd just like to comment that they haven't raised the prices in how long?
Since, yeah, it's been years.
Yeah, so. You made the motion, Chris?
I did, yep.
So, I have a motion from Councilor Tafe to approve the Rainbow Rider contract, and seconded by Councilor Christensen. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda, last item, is discuss approval of a public hearing for vacating Garter Street between East Second and East Third Street, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, or?
I've got a question. Sorry, turned it off. I have a question, just that, that information that you or Tiffany sent me today, and I was reading it, and it said, "All property people that abut to the street." So, does that mean because the street is whole right now, that all four property owners have to approve it before you cut it in half? Or do you cut it in half, and that's who abuts it? Chicken or the egg? Just wanted to, you know, know which way. In the Minnesota, I read everything that you sent me, and it said that, just that every, you know, you have two owners that.
Requested it.
Requested it, but because four parcels abut the street going north and south, do all four have to agree to it before you cut it in half? Because right now, it's a whole street.
Right.
And I don't know, I'm just asking that question.
Well, that's one, that's one of the things that the council would need to decide. Planning and zoning recommended that the whole portion of the street be vacated. The original request was just for the half.
Yeah.
For these two.
That's what I understood it to be. Okay.
So, if the council wanted to go just do this half, do they want to do the whole thing?
So, so then do we do vacating it by the city incentive and then leave out the property owners, or do you do half property owners and half city? Because there's two different sections.
We would probably want to try to get the request from one, at least one of the two other property owners, then it would be a majority.
Okay.
If we did that, but also they could come forward and give their opinions at the public hearing, because they'll be notified.
All right.
They'll have like two opportunities, probably.
And we do have utilities, some utilities.
But Randy might have something to, I don't know, add to whether he feels it should be vacated or not.
Yeah, I've got some major concerns about just vacating a street, just because. Yeah, I've got some major concerns about just vacating a street, just because a homeowner wants more property, there's not a reason behind it. Uh, once you give it away, it's gone forever, you know, a hundred years, two-hundred years down the road, and there's utilities in it, you know. When it's gone, it's gone, you can never get it back. So I guess, once you, once you give it away to one person, it opens the door to everybody else in town that has a vacated road by theirs, that says, well, you gave it to him, now you gotta give it to me, too. So, uh, if, if there's not a legitimate reason, I have some major concerns about giving property.
And it's a water main line, right, that goes through?
There's a water main through there, there's.
So they could never build on there or any, I mean, because they, they'd have to leave that accessible to you, correct?
We would, um, yeah, if, if.
I mean, I'm just saying, if you got the property, it's not gonna change any different than what it is now. I, I, I agree with what you're saying.
If they owned it, they could technically still build a house over it. We've got places in town that, you know, the nursing home, that's built over a super main, I mean, there's places in town that, things, they do build over lines. Uh, they can still use it like it's their yard, the way it is right now, you know, it's just, it's just, we still own it, so.
Are you looking for a motion to have a public hearing?
No, we'll talk, um, just a motion if the city wants to go ahead with a public hearing on it next month, and if they don't, then it's over.
I agree with Randy, I think once it's gone, it's gone, and, um, they can use it, they're using it now, that's not a problem. And who, who knows what the future holds?
We can still, we can still have a public.
Do you want to have a public hearing, just to hear what the property owners are, what their reasoning is, or concerns are, or?
I mean.
I think it would be fine to have a public hearing, because maybe they have a reason that we don't know, it's never hurt to get more information.
I tend to agree with that. I mean, just that by having a public hearing doesn't mean we're agreeing to vacate it or not, so.
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion to approve a public hearing on vacating Garter Street between Second Street and Third Street.
I'll second that motion.
You second it?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Councilor Tafe to approve a public hearing for vacating Garter Street, uh, between East Second and East Third, uh, and, uh, seconded by Councilor Christensen. And I just would say that we're gonna contact one of the other property owners and.
No, I'll be contacted about the hearing, and then, yeah.
So, okay. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. And that concludes our agenda, so. What's that?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, so we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.